All right, I'd like to call our Forest Lake Area Schools, special school board meeting, public hearing to order. Member clerk, please take a roll call.
Member Corcoran?
Here.
Member Odegaard?
Here.
Member Tyson?
Here.
Member Rayfield?
Here.
And member Olson is present.
All right, thank you. Welcome, everyone. My name's Rob Rayfield. We're here to conduct a public hearing on the proposed closure of the Central Montessori Elementary Program by Independent School District 831 Forest Lake Area Schools. I'll be serving as the facilitator of tonight's hearing. Anyone interested in presenting testimony regarding the proposed closing has the opportunity to do so, but the school district and members of the public may present evidence that's...both the school district and the members of the public may present evidence that supports their position. The purpose of today's hearing is to provide a description and a location of the school that the district has proposed to close, as well as the rationale behind the proposed closure. The hearing also provides members of the public the opportunity to testify about the proposed closing. Finally, today's hearing provides members of the school board the opportunity to consider the testimony and evidence before the regular school board meeting where they will decide whether or not to permanently close the school. In order to make sure that everyone who wants to speak has a chance to present on the proposed closing of the Central Montessori Elementary Program, the school board will also have a second voluntary hearing on the proposed closing at its May 17 meeting. While we appreciate the impact that the delay has, the board is committing to making sure that everyone has a chance to speak their mind before we make a final decision. Before the public testimony portion of the hearing, the district administration will present the rationale behind the proposed closing. If you would like to speak after the district administration presentation, see a staff member for a green card and then give the card to Ms. Ramberg, who will bring the card up to me. During the public comment portion of the hearing, I will call speakers to testify in the order that the cards have been submitted. Today's hearing involves the Central Montessori Elementary Program. At this time Superintendent Dr. Steve Massey will present the school district's reasons for proposing to close the Central Montessori Elementary Program.
Well, first of all, thank you for your flexibility in relocating. We certainly appreciate your willingness to stay with us and be present tonight. And good evening, and thank you for, again, taking the time to attend tonight's public hearing. First, I'd like to acknowledge that considering the closing of the Central Montessori Elementary School is a very difficult and painful consideration for the school district. The potential closing of CME, or any school for that matter, has a direct impact on families, students, and staff. I would like to stress that this consideration is taken very seriously and with the full understanding of the effect that closing the school will have on students, families, and staff. In an effort to provide a context for this consideration, I would like to present the historical background of the CME school. The school first was formed as a district-wide school in 1992, as a school within a school program that was housed at Scandia Elementary. The next year, the program moved to Columbus Elementary, where it remained until the year 2000. At that time, the school moved to its current location at the Central Learning Center. At its peak, in 2003, the CME enrollment was 191 students. Today, the enrollment at CME is 115 students. This represents a 40% reduction of enrollment over this time period. The current enrollment breakdown is as follows. Kindergarten, we have 19 students. First grade, 15 students. Second grade, 19 students. Third grade, 19. Fourth grade, 17 students. Fifth grade, 14 students. And in sixth grade, 12 students. Total enrollment, again, 115 students. The grade configurations are, we have one kindergarten section, we have two sections of a multi-age classroom, of multi-age classrooms of grades 1 through 3, and we have two sections of grades 4 through 6. The average class size for the multi-age section of 1 through 3 is 26.5, and the class size for sections, the 2nd through 4th through 6th grade sections, is 21.5. The staff at the Central Montessori Elementary School, we have five classroom teachers, one counselor that also serves the ALC program, a halftime music educator, and a .5 PE educator. 97 CME students are Forest Lake Area School District residents who live within the attendance boundaries of the other Forest Lake Elementary Schools. Out of district enrollment to CME is currently 18 students. Provided all current district students currently attending CME enroll in their respective neighborhood schools, the enrollment distribution is as follows. 12 students would enroll at Columbus Elementary, creating grades 1 through 6 class size average of 25.8. 28 students would attend Forest View Elementary, for a class size average of 22. 24 students would attend Forest Lake Elementary, creating a class size average of grades 1 through 6 of 24. Three students would attend Lionel Lakes Elementary, for a class size of 24.4. Four students would attend Linwood Elementary, for a class size average of 28.1. Five students would attend Scandia Elementary, for a class size of 22.7. And nine students would attend Wyoming Elementary, creating a class size average of 27. It is our sincere hope that the students who open enroll to CME from other districts, from other districts, would choose to enroll in one of our seven excellent elementary schools. These students would most likely disperse among the seven elementary schools, not resulting in the need to hire additional staff. If all CME students choose to stay in the district, we do not anticipate the need to hire additional staff to keep the class size averages at an acceptable level. It is important to note that district-wide enrollment has declined, close to 1,000 pupils over the last 10 years. Given our financial situation, common need for budget reductions, and overall lower enrollment, we are less able to support a district-wide elementary school of this size. In an ideal world, the district would be in a better position to sustain a district-wide elementary school option pursuits. However, within the current history of budget reductions and adjustments, and our declining district fund balance, the district is facing the difficult decision of potentially closing the CME school. This year, the school district is making $2 million -- is making $2 million in budget cuts and adjustments in order to create a balanced budget for the 2018-2019 school year. The school board enacted $1.7 million of reductions and adjustments at their April 5 school board meeting. The remaining $300,000 of reductions still needs to be finalized, most likely at a May school board meeting. These reductions, along with the $5.5 million of reductions in the last three years alone, will total $7.5 million of reductions in just the last four years. Given the magnitude of these budget reductions over this time, it is important to understand why the district is in this situation. There are two significant factors. The first is that state per pupil funding is not keeping pace with inflation. In fact, there's presently a $2,500 per pupil gap between current per pupil funding and where that funding would be had the state kept up with inflation over the last 25 years. The second factor is that our district's voter-approved operating referendum, a $462 per pupil, has not seen an increase in over 11 years. The administrative recommendation is to close the CME program, as opposed to making other budget adjustments to reach the necessary $300,000 of budget cuts. Given the 40% reduction of enrollment since CME's enrollment peak, and the level of budget reductions enacted over the last number of years, continuing to operate CME is not sustainable. Should the school board decide to close CME, currently enrolled students will indeed have the option to enroll in their respective home elementary schools. All of these community schools are designated schools of excellence and have exceptional educators who will welcome them into their school communities. Of course, each of these students will have district transportation to their home elementary schools. It's important to note that we also have programming elements at different elementary schools, such as STEM, Spanish Immersion Plus, international and international baccalaureate. There are options if parents can provide transportation to a school other than their respective home elementary school. Additionally, equivalent special education services and other support services will be available in these schools should students need or qualify for such services. Should the school board decide to close CME, the staff members who have already been informed -- the staff members who have already been informed that they have a teaching position following the budget reductions enacted on April 5 will still have teaching positions in the district. These teachers have already been informed of their teaching assignments should CME close. Lastly, should the school board decide to close CME, classrooms at Southwest Junior High School that are scheduled to be remodeled under the current bond projects will still be remodeled. The use of these instructional spaces will be determined at a future date. The other programs currently housed at CLC, including ALC early childhood programs, will be relocated to the remodeled Southwest building. And thank you, and that concludes my remarks.
All right, thank you. At this time, members of the public are invited to speak in favor of or in opposition to the proposed closing of the Central Montessori Elementary Program. As I mentioned at the beginning of the hearing, I will call speakers to testify in the order that they submitted the green cards. If you would like to speak and have not already done so, please see a staff member for a green card and then give it to Ms. Ramberg, who will bring the card to me. When you are called to speak, please state your name and address. In order to keep things moving, I encourage speakers to limit their presentation to three minutes. In order for the recorder to accurately record testimony, I ask that only one person speak at a time. The school board is here tonight to listen. We will be able to answer procedural questions, but we will not be in a position tonight to answer other questions or engage in a discussion on the topic. Our role tonight is to receive your input, options, opinions, and concerns. And so I think what we'll do is, I've got the cards here, I'll announce a person's name, and I think if we stand over there, we'll start out standing over here and see how that works for people and, yeah. But something that's never happened before is somebody bought a presentation. So David, Rachid, you want to come up and do your presentation?
I didn't see where you wanted me to stand.
Oh, either here or over here?
I forgot I'm ready to go.
Okay, yep. It's a little tight.
Yeah, I could have to stand behind the speaker and stand in front of the speaker. You're gonna get feedback.
Good evening. Usually when I make these presentations, it's in front of a whole bunch of strangers, so it's nice to see, especially over here, my goodness.
One moment, I said that. Which button, Diane?
Up toward the top, hit mute. I think it's the top left.
Just trying to turn that, this on?
Yeah.
If you're lucky, you can call. It's on, it's just the mute button.
You can mute 50.
There you go.
Good evening. I'm David Rodger. You can go to the second, next slide. I'm at 20297,
Everton Circle North, Forest Lake, Minnesota. I'll make a quick introduction. I attended K through 12 in the Forest Lake school districts. I will tell you that I do distinctly remember my month into college, sitting around looking at the other students around me and thinking I was much more prepared to go to school. So I am internally grateful to the school district here in Forest Lake for my foundation, my education. While I was not a stellar student in Forest Lake, I did go on and graduate with honors, and that gave me a lot of scholarships for my graduate school programs, and again, I'm really, really thankful. I have four kids. All of them have gone to Central Montessori Elementary. Two are in college, or excuse me, in high school. One graduates is going on to college next year. I have one in Southwest Junior High, and I still have one in Central Montessori. And you'd think, by the way, board members, that's why I'm talking tonight. And I will tell you that I was not planning to talk tonight when I first heard about this. I know that the problems that Forest Lake has with its budget, and I could understand why this was being looked at. But the reason I'm here tonight was when I found out that you're only gonna save $250,000 by stopping, or by closing Central Montessori. And that is what was really surprising to me, and it still doesn't make sense to me. So I knew what to do at that point. I reached out to Larry Martini, who I got to know a couple of years ago, working with Dr. Mattson on the project, and I know he's a straight shooter, and I asked him a lot of questions. He spent nearly two hours on the phone with me, and he explained the situation. And he did confirm it's likely only $250,000 that you're gonna save by closing Central Montessori. So I don't, I want to take the emotion on it. I know it's gonna be emotional the rest of the night, so I'm gonna try to keep that out of it. And I just wanna look at this from a business standpoint. If I was sitting on the board, how I would look at it. So I just, I'm gonna go over this quickly, 'cause I know it's gonna be a long night. But I took kind of your standard business approach. One of them, there's a lot of tools, but this is the SWOT approach, which is strengths, weaknesses, and opportunities and threats. And I tried to think about it from the way that Dr. Massey has to look at this and you as board members have to look at this. So first of all, strengths of Central Montessori. There are many, and you're gonna hear about a lot of them tonight. The dollar and cents-wise is by far the most efficient elementary school that you have. It only costs $250,000, or $250,000 to run this school per year, 'cause that's what you're gonna save if you close it. That's about $2,200 a kid a year. And while the state funding is inadequate, it is $6,200. So if you wanna look at it, there's a net of $63,000 the district gets to use and other parts of the district with other kids, because it's so efficient to educate our kids at Central Montessori. More than that, we have about 20 kids from outside the district that cost $2,200 a year to educate, and by the way, educate very well, thank you. And so that means there's another 150,000 that the district gets from that. Probably more importantly is everybody in this room. Every one of these people has thought about where they want their kids to go to school, and that makes them special people. And these people tend to be more likely to be coaches, more likely to volunteer for committees. When I go up to high school for music, it's the same people, and they're from Central Montessori that are running these things. What's important to you as board members is, after a decade of coaching, I've coached, 'cause we have a small school, we never get our own team, I've coached for every elementary school in this district and outside this district, Leela and St. Peters. I have hundreds and hundreds of emails from people who live in this district and vote in this district. We are the ones, I promise you, we have really helped you in that last bond offering get that passed, 'cause we have the contacts. We come from, as you already said, every home elementary school in the district. So we're a great asset to the board and passing these things. Weakness, well, I've heard it a lot. It's not true Montessori. So I will grant you it's that. I will tell you that if it were a true Montessori, I probably wouldn't have put my kids in here, because when my wife said, "We're no longer sending our kids to this school. Let's go check out this Montessori school," quite honestly, I thought to myself, "I don't want my kids going to hippie school." So it was when they told me that they use a Forest Lake curriculum within the Montessori tradition of taking kids and learning how they learn and helping them move forward. And that's why my four kids have been really successful. My kids range from special needs to advanced placement, almost always straight A's, getting college credit in high school. And that's because the Central Montessori took them on as individuals. So opportunities. I'm really surprised that the district doesn't go out there and really promote the school, because you make money when people come from outside the district, educate them for $2,200, and get $6,200 from the state. So that's an opportunity. I think the board here knows, and they described their problems. They have declining enrollment. Charter schools don't. North Lakes Academy will 2019, 2020 have a K through 4 program. So this can be a bulwark that defends the district against that competition that's gonna come in. Now, I think the most important thing is what Dr. Massey talked about tonight. The real problem isn't Central Montessori. It's not the quarter million dollars a cost for you guys to provide our kids an excellent education. It's that we don't have funding. And more importantly, what hasn't been talked about tonight, is out of a $72 million budget, we only have a reserve of $2 million. That's terrifying. I gotta believe that it keeps you guys up at night. And that kind of reserve can't continue. $250,000 doesn't put a dent to that. That should be $5 to $7 million. The truth is, if you don't pass this levy this fall, you're gonna have to close a standalone elementary school, not just our school, whether you close ours or not. 'Cause that's the only thing that's gonna give you the real money to make a dent in your reserves, and if you don't pass the levy, enrollment's likely to continue to degrade. So this is an opportunity to give you that flexibility that if you do have to close a standalone school, that people have two options now. Their new home elementary school or CME. So the threats are already there. We've seen them over the time. Voters not passing levies, charter schools expanding at the expense of our district, right? So and if the levy fails, I don't know how you get around not closing another elementary school, regardless of what you do here with Central Montessori. So just conclusion, quick overview. Closing CME now, at best, is a short-term, one-year solution. It aggravates long-term funding problems that the district already has, and it eliminates that alternative for when you do, if the levy fails, have to close a standalone elementary to give people an alternative other than their home elementary school. If you keep all the elementary schools open for next year, but close one if you fail, it increases the proposed budget by Larry Martini by about 1/3 of 1%, almost nothing. But it provides flexibility in the future for other cuts, which is likely, again, if it fails, you're gonna have to close probably a standalone elementary school. But more importantly, it doesn't, it creates warriors of every parent of every elementary school in the district, 'cause they'll wanna protect their elementary school. And that's what this board should be thinking about, is the strategy and getting the levy passed. So I wanna talk a little bit about the levy. I know we're not here to talk about it, I'm gonna go over it quickly. I had the pleasure of working for a company that's built well over a billion dollars of the hotels and resorts around the world. I work for the division that is in the public-private partnership, which means we work with cities to build hotel convention centers. Many of them need some kind of referendum, bonding, or levy to get passed. So we help a lot of cities with this. Here's the thing. For the last 12 to 13 years, I've been helping, trying to help this board pass every levy, every bond. And I know these, 'cause I know the parents. We've been in the meetings. We try to pass them. So take this where it's worth. It's free. I know you're gonna pay consultants a lot of money this fall to get this thing passed, but from what I've observed, you have to brand these things. You have to name them. You gotta, you gotta create an identity. In the last 12 years, I don't know, if somebody, please tell me if I'm wrong, there hasn't been one name on these levies. It's always the levy or the bond. So you gotta get a simple name, and this one, I call it the State Average Local Education Funding Levy. So when people read that in the newspaper, they can immediately get an idea that we're not trying to pork up the budget, we're just trying to get the average. And I think that will help. The other part's messaging. I tried to get answers. I'm supportive of it, and I haven't been able to get answers in the past. You have to make clear promises that say, "These are the things we promised to do if the levy passes." You also have to say, "Here are what we're gonna do if it doesn't." And the promises for this one should be, "We're not gonna close an elementary school if we pass this levy. And we're gonna reduce our fees." Because I was gonna tell you, as a parent of four kids, and I know other people right here, writing checks all the time, it's gonna be a lot less to pay than my property taxes, and it's in my mortgage that I don't notice it, that my kid's going, "I need this." And the consequences, of course, if it fails, you're gonna close an elementary school. And I think if you don't get it passed this fall, CME ain't gonna cover it. It's gonna have to be a standalone elementary school, most likely, 'cause you gotta get some real savings in $250,000. I'll just keep this, one proposal, last slide, sorry. I know it's three minutes, but I asked, "Is there a time limit?" And I was told no. So I'm like gas, I'm gonna expand as much time as I can. I would propose to you to keep all the elementary schools open for next year. That'll cost you $250,000, as you proposed tonight. Increase activity fees by 15% to cover that. Your fees are about $2 million a year. That gets you $300,000. That covers your hole that you already have. And then say, if it passes, immediately lower the fees, keep all the schools open. But if it doesn't, make those fees permanent, and then say, permanently close one of them. If it's CME, if that makes the most sense to you at that time, do it then. So I wanna thank you for the time. I know it was more than three minutes. But I wanna leave one thing. If this was a business, and you were a retail company, and CME was one of your standalone stores, it would be your most profitable store by profit margin and probably by volume. And in a business, you would never close that one. You should keep it open. And the last thing I'd say is, I know you've heard this before on a lot of budget items, but it's less than 1 half, 1% that you're talking about. There's no other budget item like that where you're gonna take 20 kids and rip their hearts out, 'cause you're taking away a school. It's the only one they've ever known. So thank you for your time. I'm sorry it went so long.
All right, thank you. All right, Matthew Castillo?
I don't have a presentation. No, I, you know, a lot what he said, you know, I've got a son and a daughter that have gone to the school. You know, they've done for him just amazing things. And it would be a huge, huge detriment to the community. You know, I look at and I hear that we haven't passed, and we're not talking about the levy, but you know, I hear we haven't passed it for the past couple of times, and I have to ask myself, well, if we, maybe we need to change what we're doing, you know? 'Cause if we keep doing the same thing over and over again, you know, if that's the definition of insanity, expecting something, we're expecting it's gonna pass this time. It's gonna pass this time. You know, anyways, I'll just, yeah. And it seems like a lot of the things that were, the decisions that we're making are based on assumptions and possibilities, and, well, if everybody stays in the district, and if this happens, then we can save this much money. And that's, that's not good business practice, not to go off of what the gentleman was saying before. But you know, I think we gotta look at the negatives, what are the possible issues that we could face if we do close the school and we don't save the money, and we, you know, and we wind up still out the money, and now we don't, we've lost a good school, we've lost a quality school and quality product. And you have to look at what they're producing, and you know, they're producing a quality product, you know? And, yeah. I don't really have much to add after that. That was, that's pretty good.
All right. Thank you. Angela Parsons?
Angela Parsons?
My name's Angela Parsons. I live in Wyoming. Do you want my physical address? I don't know Dave. I've never met him before. That was a very interesting talk. The message that I wanted to get up here and say to you is that the cost of Central Montessori, and I'm not even looking at dollars, I'm looking at more students and emotions. The cost is minimal. The effect that Central Montessori has on students is profound. And you guys should be looking at that as a very inexpensive way to have an impact on students. My personal story. I have a son, Dr. Massey. He graduated last year, your last year as principal. I introduced myself to you about ten years ago, before he even started high school. I was born in Dubuque. That was the reason I introduced myself to you. I transferred my son to Central Montessori mid-elementary school. He was having a lot of difficulties at his home elementary. It was an amazing, profound change. And I brought this picture tonight. I want you to see who my son is. This is my son. I guarantee, I guarantee this would not have been the case had it not been for Central Montessori. There is no doubt in my mind the outcome would have been different. I have no idea what the outcome would have been, but I know that it would not have been this. I now have a niece at Central Montessori. She lives with me part-time. They are doing wonderful things for her as well. It's, it's, it almost, you can't put into words what this school does for these kids. Unless you've been there, unless you've gone there, unless you've had kids go there, it's really hard to describe. But I think the message I wanna give to you, and again, without putting any dollars on it, this is human faces. Central Montessori is an incredibly inexpensive way to affect students' lives. And you should look at it from that format, from that perspective. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Holly Witkowski?
Witkowski.
I was closer this time.
Yes, you were. Yes, you were. Good evening, and thank you for letting me address you again tonight. I am here on behalf of the Forest Lake High School Music Boosters Club. And if you don't remember me, and obviously I kinda do, my name is Holly Witkowski, and I am the vice president of the High School Boosters, Music Boosters Club. But I'm also here as a former parent of a CME student. So, I'm gonna try not to cry, so here we go. The Music Boosters recognizes the difficult position that you guys are being faced with. And there are no easy answers tonight. And that we recognize that we cannot have a strong music program without our fantastic music staff that ranges from elementary all the way up to high school. However, our music program begins in elementary school and grows from there. I am not here to tell you that it's either the music department or Montessori. We are all here together, and we are all facing the same cuts. Obviously, CME is a little bit deeper than the music program, but, you know, we're all facing cuts together. And as a former CME parent and a music parent, and the difficult decisions ahead, my daughter would not be in music if there was no program offered in elementary school. And also, she would not have done well in a large classroom size like the other schools in the district. At that time, when she was coming up through CME, there was easily twenty-eight to thirty-plus students. In her classes, I believe kindergarten was like twelve?
Fourteen.
Fourteen, thank you. And then going up throughout the years, I mean, you can't get any better than that. And the quality of teachers, the quality of the staff, everybody, parents, everyone alike. So that's why, you know, CME holds a very dear place in my heart, and is asked that you make the decision based upon data that has been presented to you by not only us as a music program, but also by fellow CME parents and staff. Look around. There are many dedicated staff here, parents, and the students. And, and I strongly believe that the staff, parents, and students here are fretting for what they believe in, and that's a school of excellence that offers a unique, and I'll stress, unique and special, Montessori school, not only to our Forest Lake residents, but far and wide around us. In closing, the Music Boosters is not rooting for CME to close just to save our, not making cuts to our program. And I am here to say that we support CME, staff, parents, and students, and our music program cannot continue to grow and thrive as students and families move out of the district or seek other options by closing CME. So thank you for letting me address you again, and, you know, I love Montessori. I love the staff, and thank you.
Brandy Forga?
I have one child in CME. CME is family, I'm sorry. My daughter was in a tragic accident in two thousand and fourteen. As a result, she lost most of her life. CME stood behind us. While she was in the hospital, they sent her gifts. They sent her cards. She started CME with Miss Barbie, and Miss Barbie would tell me every day what the kids did for her, how they tried on her paresthesis, how happy she was. She doesn't quite understand what's going on. This year, she started school in a wheelchair. She was not able to use the restroom by herself. Miss Levine hired the best para for her. Miss Lisa knew how far to push Sam. She helped her get back up and walk. We went from a wheelchair to a walker to crutches to now completely independent. CME is not just a school. CME is a family.
Steven Pedderson?
Good evening, everyone. My name's Steven Pedderson. I'm a former student of Central Montessori. It's great to see everyone over here, but I'm not gonna look, because I'm a very emotional person, so. I just wanna say thank you, board members, for listening to everyone here. I know everyone is trying to express their opinions and views on this, and it's really a lot to take in. So, I just wanna mention, it's, I think it's really important for, you know, everyone here, not just the board members who are making the big decision here, to just open our minds and listen to everyone here. Whether you're, you know, one opinion or another, it's really important to listen to everyone and make sure we get everyone's, you know, input on this. So with that being said, like she mentioned earlier, I knew Vincent. He was a few years younger than me, and he's a really good person now. He, it's really interesting how he transitioned into the school. I still remember him coming in, and it was an interesting person to try to deal with because I'm a more introvert, and he was very, you know, expressive. So, I just wanna say he's become a very great person. He definitely did transition very well through Central Montessori and into the middle schools and high schools. And that's just one great example of how, you know, CME has helped students. I myself have been very physically and emotionally impacted in a positive way because of Central Montessori. And I didn't even know, actually, this was existing until probably about an hour before it started. I ended up leaving work early, coming here just to speak because I feel very passionate about this school. I like to not think about dollar-wise and think, you know, a lot of people are saying, well, it's gonna be very emotional, and it's gonna be hard on students. And I honestly believe that's the truth. It's very hard to see that from a business perspective. You know, you're looking at numbers and, you know, pupils and everything. But you have to, you do have to look at, you know, how is this gonna impact all these families? Like you mentioned, there's so many people that come from out of the district. Even with people coming all the way from Lynwood and Scandia, that's, that's a good drive down to Forest Lake. You know, I myself, living over near Sagal area, it wasn't too far of a drive, but I can't imagine if someone's willing to commit to a school that they're gonna drive and send their kids to. If you're gonna shut this, you know, the school down, it's gonna be really big and impactful on them. And so I just urge you to consider how this isn't gonna impact, you know, the families beyond the budget. I understand that, you know, we do need to save money. It's part of every school district, you know, they're gonna have to make budget cuts. But I feel that you need to look at our issues that you're, you know, looking at why we're gonna shut this and look at what are some possibilities to fix this so we can continue to run the school. These, this staff is the most amazing thing I've ever seen. I have visited so many teachers after high school, and that would have never happened if, I would have never gotten there. These, these teachers have put emotional impact on me that is gonna stick with me for the rest of my life, and I can't be ever more grateful for these guys. So, please, I mean, really open your hearts and your minds to what people are gonna talk about because it's a very emotional ballgame, so, thank you.
All right, thank you. Marissa Trembrough?
First, I wanna start off by saying that I understand your position is a difficult one, that there's lots of different things to consider. So I appreciate you listening and for being here tonight. Back to what Dr. Massey mentioned about us as a district not passing a levy since two thousand and six, I believe. I was pregnant with my first child when the principal from Wyoming Elementary and the school psychologist went door-to-door knocking to see, gathering support for the levy. That's when it passed. I was pregnant. I said, and I could visibly see their faces fall when they found out we didn't have any kids in the district. My husband is an educator in a different district, so I told them, I want to support this district as much as possible. Fast forward five, five and a half years, I started looking at different elementary schools in the district. What would I felt would be a good fit? Our home elementary school is Wyoming. Class sizes were big. As we can see, they were going to increase more. And we toured there, we toured Montessori, we toured Lila, and felt that Montessori would be the best fit for our family and our kids. Currently, we have three children in the district, school at Montessori, and it has been a wonderful experience. My degree is in child psychology, so I see how moving kids around, switching schools can impact them, not just short-term, but long-term as well. Some kids, it is a unique learning environment. There is kindergarten's on its own, but the multi-age level classrooms, kids have an opportunity to learn from their peers, which is not present in any of the other schools. So it's a very unique environment. I don't doubt that the other elementary schools provide for their students as well. But one of the reasons why I went and looked elsewhere is because it's the best fit for us. And when I've heard people say, yes, there's other great teachers, yes, there are, and there's great other schools, but that's not what I, why we went to CME. We went to there for their unique learning environment, for the smaller class sizes. And that's not what would be provided if the school closes. Unfortunately, if it does, we will not be one of the ones that stays in district. We will look elsewhere, which is hard, because we want to support our community, we want to be there, but we can't do that knowing that they're going to be in a class size of close to thirty kids. So, thank you for listening, and, thank you.
John Bodine?
Thank you for having us. Firstly, I wanted to point out, John Bodine, Wyoming, Minnesota. Sorry. August thirtieth, two thousand and twelve, Central Montessori Elementary in Forest Lake became the first Montessori school to be named Minnesota School of Excellence. It's a pretty prestigious award. It was the third year in a row that an elementary school from our district received it. And for it to be a Montessori was unheard of at that point. Another thing to look at is we're one of the few districts, or one of the few Montessori's throughout the state that is involved within a district. Most of them are independent, and most of them are paid. I understand, I started my high school, or my school career in Forest Lake in nineteen seventy-four, so I'm a little bit older. Graduated in eighty-eight, came through, we had kids, and me and my wife came back into the area. We were gone for just a little bit, and school's about to start. And I looked her in the eyes, and I said, there's no way in the world my kid's ever gonna attend Forest Lake. I don't trust the school district, and I don't trust the community. Now, where does that come from? You said in eleven years, we haven't received a raise, correct? The community doesn't support the school. And it's pretty obvious in how long it took to get the bond passed. I mean, yeah, I went to Central Junior High, you know, in the eighties, and it hasn't changed. You know, so there's damage that's been happening, and the community's allowed it to happen. But I look at the board here, and I can probably say I voted for every one of you. So I take the responsibility that I've put you in your position. And as much as the community's failed us with passing the bonds and the levies and that, you guys have failed us also. Because I can go back to two thousand and six for the first levy that didn't pass after that, and I can find the exact same reasons why people don't trust the school district in the last one that didn't pass. They say it's top heavy. They say it's this, they say it. I hear from my parents' friends who've lived here forever. And what blows my mind is how do these same objections keep coming up? Why are we not stopping? And, you know, I've gotta look at you. I mean, you've gotta take some responsibility there. I've gotta look at myself. You know, I tried talking to my parents. You know what politics is like. You know, so, I love this school. I mean, these people have been amazing, basing them through it. We started a school, and it didn't work out, so we had to, we had to go into Forest Lake. I had to go into the school district. You know, kicking and screaming, I didn't want to, but I, I heard of this Montessori school. And I kinda liked it, and then I got in there, and I met him, and I loved it. But I still, when the next levy didn't pass, I still didn't trust it. You know, so my kids go to Lila. One of my kids couldn't go to Lila anymore. She's got some learning issues and speech issues and that, so we had to put her someplace else. And the only place in the district I would ever trust is Montessori. Because of the fact that they, that it's a small class size, and it's the, it's the individual, it's the, you know, the heart's there. Not that it's not in any other school, it just seems bigger there. So, with, with closing this, and if this bond passes, we can't, or the levy passes, we can't bring the school back. This is, this is permanent. This is legacy-ending decisions here. And I realize that there's other things that you could do, you know, laying off other teachers, cutting other programs. And then if the levy passes, you can bring those things back. You can't bring this school back. And I'm not on an emotional level, I'm just on a reality level here. If it closes, I mean, my, my trust level of this district and the community is an all-time low. You know, if this happens, I have no reason to trust you. I'll support anything the school needs, I'll help pass levies, I'll help do all that, but I won't go back into it. I've been burned. They took away sports and the junior high level, they've done different things, and it's just... This is the last straw in my ass. And it's a foolish one because it's a legacy-killing decision. Thank you.
Kim Robertson?
Kim Robertson.
Hi, I'm Kim Robertson, um, from Forest Lake. Um, I, uh, am double dipping a little bit. I took, uh, the advantage of being able to get your emails and sent you all a letter yesterday. I hope you had the opportunity to read it. Um, I'm not gonna go through all the details I presented there, but I just would like to let folks know that, um, I did cover some of the trust concerns that we have. Just the speed between the time that this proposal came forward and the time that a decision has to be made is something that is obviously very unnerving to many folks. You know, we just, we don't have time to deal with any of this. We don't have time to make our cases the way some of these other, um, groups have, where they've been for years, they know they're on the chopping board and, and they need to be presenting this case to you guys. And so, I think that that's something that's important to acknowledge. Um, I also, uh, I did pull some research and I wanna, I know Marissa touched on this already, but the act of moving kids, it has a detrimental effect, um, on academics, on behavior, on social, um, issues. It has a negative effect both on the students that are moved and on the schools that the students are moved into. And these are, when you look at studies where you're controlling for things like socioeconomic status or family dynamics, things that force a, a physical move of a home. So I'd ask you to please consider that and just the, the impact that you're gonna have on these kids. You know, you're forcing this move on all of these kids, this, this extra transition within their elementary time period if this is what happens. Um, that said, I do wanna acknowledge that I, I don't envy any of you. I know this is a really tough position and that all of these cuts are awful. And, um, I'm sorry that you're all in this position. I mean, I, I've been one of these parents that's been out, that's been at the center of phone trees, that's connected every dot that I possibly can and reminded people to vote and, and, um, you know, been there when I'm the only one who doesn't have white hair and I'm hoping to goodness that it's not all my, my people of my parents' generation who are voting no because they're afraid their taxes are gonna be raised. But, I mean, that said, you can see that there is support for this and I, I do feel like we've come to a whole new level with this round of cuts. You've seen the passion in the music families, you've seen the passion, um, here with us. And I think, I hope, and, you know, with some of the new energy around branding, new ideas on how we might get this levy passed, I hope that this is a situation that we're now repeating next year. Um, that said, I would like to focus a little bit on the positives of Montessori. So many people have said wonderful things about our teachers here, I shouldn't have looked at them. I, I have three students, I have, um, my son is a senior, or I have three sons. One is a senior, one is a seventh grader at Century, and one is a fourth grader at Montessori. And we've had really wonderful experiences in the district. We've benefited from all of the wonderful class opportunities, the music, the sports, all of those things. But I would say there's something about Montessori, you know, this, this multi-year classroom. It's not just the, the older students helping the younger students. These, these relationships that our kids build with the teachers are really remarkable. Sorry. The fact that we don't have to start a new year with Mrs. Secora learning that my son can be really obnoxious reading under his desk. You know, they, they understand, they know these kids. And, you know, my kids don't struggle academically, but they do need some of the social help and some of those things. And just having that opportunity to have those relationships has really, really prepared my kids for this, the world. And I just wanna acknowledge that special element of the Montessori programming and the way that this, this school is structured. And I would be terribly sad to see that go away and other students lose that opportunity. Um, I also do wanna comment because I know several parents have made comments about small class sizes and how they wouldn't wanna go to another school because class sizes would be larger. I heard you reading the numbers off there, I realize, you know, twenty-two, twenty-four, those are really bigger class sizes. But I will tell you, the classes feel smaller at Montessori. Part of it is the way things are structured, you know, in a one, two, three class, you've got first graders peeling off to do something, you know, while second graders and third graders are doing other things. The community is very, very tight. And it is just such a different dynamic than a classroom where the students are changing and everything is, is different every year. And it really offers something special. So I ask you to consider both the negatives of closing the school and the, the extreme effect you're gonna have on a small proportion of the students in the district. Um, and the positives that we can have by keeping this, this, the school open. And hopefully we find some way to build a little scheme and, and rejuvenate our numbers there. But again, thank you for, for, um, your time, thank you for being here and listening to this. I know it can be pleasant, um, thank you.
Joshua Beecher.
Thanks for having us here tonight. Um, most of my stuff's, stuff that's been said already, but I wanna reiterate it. Um, so we have, uh, just to go over a few numbers, eighteen out of district kids, those are gonna be gone. As we know, it's about a hundred and eight thousand from the district. Um, projected probably forty to fifty students leaving. Um, 'cause if, family might have one or two people in Montessori, but they might have one or two people in the higher levels that are gonna leave too. And right there are over three hundred thousand that we're gonna save by closing the school. And, um, when I talk to people about the Central Montessori that aren't in this district, they just can't believe that there's actually a, um, public Montessori and it makes them think about it. And like, like you were saying in the beginning, you know, if more people knew about that, we'd probably have more people coming into the district. Um, it just, it's not knowledge. I mean, we moved into the district two, three, four years ago and when we moved in, we didn't know there was public Montessori, but the second we found out, there was no other choice for, for our kids. I have one daughter in, uh, second grade and then I have three more daughters that are gonna go through CME, um, as they grow older. Um, and then, um, the big thing, obviously the levy. If we keep this school around, we have parents of a hundred and eighteen children out there walking the streets, making this levy pass. Um, personally, if this school closes, I'm not gonna vote yes. I don't know if I would even, you know, I'd probably stay in the district, but I just, we're losing something big, you know? That levy, if we get out there and we pass that levy, you know, it's five point seven plus million dollars that we're gonna have. And there's a lot of people here that might vote no because just to kinda stake it to the district. Um, I hope that doesn't happen, but it could. So, um, I just hope you guys consider everything, like they were saying, this, you can't bring back a school. Once a school's gone, it's gone. And it's all these people that are successful, all these kids are successful because of the type of school we have at CME. And, uh, yeah, I hope we can cut somewhere else and bring whatever we cut back once, uh, once all of us in this room get out there and meet the pavement and, uh, make this levy pass.
Alright, thank you. Angie Lundblad.
Hi, my name is Angie Lundblad. I'm actually one of the eighteen that's out of district, so we're in Stacy. So our homeschool is just Sagal Lakes. I'm also the PTSA president here for Central Montessori. And so for some of the families that weren't able to come, we have them email what they wanted to be said. And so I'm just gonna read it off, so this is from a variety of parents. So the first one says, hi, my name is Jennifer Root and I have two kids that attend Central Montessori. I'm hoping that you read this and you can decide if it's worth a share at the public media. I'm in shock that the closing of Central Montessori is even an option. I chose this school for my kids because of how the students are taught in the smaller class sizes. I have one child in particular that is finally thriving in school because of the Montessori. I do not want to have to send her back to a quote, "regular elementary school" as I feel all the stability that we have worked so hard, um, to achieve will disappear. The thought of sending my kids back to a school where a population of students per teacher is outrageous is just sickening to me. A school such as the Montessori is so important to my family because it is ensuring that my children are being taught in a manner that is appropriate for them, not a one-size, one-size-fits-all approach. The Montessori staff work really hard to make sure all the kids are successful and they have worked more with my children and me than the normal elementary school ever did. If Forest Lake decides to close the Montessori, I will be looking for options to take my kids out of the Forest Lake district. I need a school for my kids that will support their way of learning and to ensure their success. Um, this one is from Adita, and I cannot pronounce that last name. Jo- Jo- Janavas- What? Yes. Ja- Janavana-Vish.
Sorry.
That's a real, it's a lot of letters. It says, hello, I'm very sad to hear that CME might close and very fortunate that my son, son Agnes- Agnes was able to attend. Agnes was having a really hard time in a regular public school. He had issues with sitting still and talking. The way his previous school solved these issues was separating him from the class and that resulted in his low self-esteem, low self-worth, and falling behind academically. In third grade, Agnes's math was at a kindergarten level, reading was a little better, but not good. We knew we needed a change and we looked at so many options, but most Montessori schools are private and that was not an option for us because we couldn't possibly afford it. We were so glad that we found CME. Today, Agnes is at his grade level in all of his classes. He is happy, he loves his teachers, and he's made some great friends. All the staff at CME are the most amazing people. If there was a problem, teachers addressed it in a positive way. When Agnes was having some family-related issues, he received support and understanding from all staff members, not just his teachers. All of them did way more than just quote, "their job." CME truly changed our lives. Positive experience in elementary school and good academics put a strong base for Agnes's success in middle school and more. I don't think that my son is alone. I believe that are so many children that could not succeed in a regular classroom and schools like CME could be the answer. Thank you very much for your time. Hello, I will not be able to attend the meeting to help save CME. As a single mother, moving to Forest Lake was the best choice I could make for my three children. When looking for schools that would fit my children's needs, I had three options. Out of all of them, the uniqueness of CME caught my attention, not only because of the school ratio, but the morals and the way of ed- the way of education, the way that, the way of education the CME structures for their students. Especially for one of my children who's going through some learning interventions, being able to get that support at CME with a smaller group to where she was a priority and her needs were being met. The short months that my daughter has, has attended CME, it has boosted her confidence in knowing that they have such a wonderful support team that is helping them. But it's, I don't know, I'm gonna say that. Although smaller class sizes make my children feel like they have the extra help with their needs without feeling left out. And the teachers have made it a priority to make sure communication is kept with each and every parent. I have never had my questions or concerns be answered in such a timely manner like my children's teachers have done at CME. Also, the time that my children attend school works perfectly for my work schedule as a single mom. I know that the funds for education is important and without proper funds, our children cannot have the proper education. But CME has done everything possible to make it happen and continue to give my children the best education possible without being felt like they're left out, um, in an overpopulated classroom. Please reconsider and keep CME open for the future children. Thank you, Nancy. And two more. Hi, my name is Denise and my daughter is currently a kindergartner at CME. I chose CME for many reasons. One, I like the way they integrate children, starting in the first grade. I feel it's so important for my daughter to be around older kids her age because she's an only child. Second, the class sizes are small and CME, she can be heard and she's not lost in the shuffle. Third, I am a single parent with a full-time job. CME starts at eight AM, this works with my schedule. I can get my daughter up in the morning and she gets on the bus and I can go to work. Um, I know that there's before and after school care in our district and it's a great program. The only thing is I'm a single parent and cannot afford to enroll my child in SAC. Um, I don't have a vehicle to get my daughter to and from and so there's no public transportation for these kids, um, to get to and from a SAC program. In conclusion, if CME closes, I'm left with two options. Find a different job, which is tough for me since I walk to my current job. And the second is to enroll her in one of the schools in Forest Lake area where the schedule is the same as my work schedule. I graduated from Forest Lake High School, class of ninety-five, and I'd like to go back to the district that I proudly graduated from. Thank you for taking the time to listen to Concerned Parents, sincerely, Denise. And then, the last one was just sent to me about ten minutes before the meeting started from a student. And says, dear board, I am Maya from CME. I wanted to let you know that our school isn't really something you can just cut. And I'm trying to say this in the nicest way. And we are trying to make it possible by cutting some of our new teachers. I believe CME should be open because we need a school like ours. We get more one-on-one attention. And it makes a great community in the school districts. Parents really don't have much of a different choice to have a smaller school and some people can't afford the private school. We, uh, uh, schools like Forest Lake and Forest View are big schools and some people don't want their kids to be overwhelmed. I really hope you take this sincerely. CME student, Maya O'Connor. Alright, um, I wanted to thank, um, Steve and Gail for coming to our last PTSA meeting. It was really great to have you guys there and have some of that discussion and bring up some questions. Um, I continued to poll parents, many of you I've emailed, I've talked to in the halls, and I just have a few more updated numbers. Um, currently, we're sitting at forty-seven students, um, that would choose a non-district school if CME were to close. Um, six additional families have said that they would stay in district for a year or two until NLA opens. Um, and then there's a few that are undecided. This number does include some of the incoming kindergarteners, um, for the next year as well, so it's not all just current students. It's a really unique program. I know you're gonna hear that over and over and over again. Our story is we were one of the people that opened enrolled into Wyoming, tried, tried to that and just because they could bus us as a homeschool. And it just wasn't right fit for my oldest daughter. She graduated from CME and is out southwest. She has special needs and it is just that format that you're not gonna find anywhere else. It really helps them to have that consistency of one teacher for three years, one classroom for three years, one setting that they understand, this rules and these environments and their expectations. And my son, no special needs, he'll do fine wherever I pop. He will excel and he will be great. Um, but this school really has that unique format that really meets and that's where you're gonna hear a lot of these families that have tried their homeschool. They've, they've gone out there, they've, they've given it a shot there and it just didn't fit. It didn't work. There's something about this model that works. The multi-age, the consistency with those teachers. And I know, I've been touring the other schools and I know the class averages, you're taking a K-six number, the class averages of, if the, the three of us that have been touring other schools, if we put all of our fifth graders at this school, or all of our fifth graders at this school, it's gonna bump those classroom sizes up to thirty-one and thirty-two. Each principal that I have the pleasure of sitting down with and talking, amazing principals. They still can't give me a number. What's that magic number that when it gets upwards of thirty-two, thirty-three kids in a class? Are you gonna split that and have a fourth teacher? And outright principals have told me, there's not a magic number, they're not gonna do it. And if the numbers get up that high, they look at that K-three as more of the primary option for splitting and going into that bigger, you know, opening that fourth section versus the four, five, six. My son is about as tall as me. A lot of those other fifth and sixth graders are about as tall as me. Thirty-one to thirty-two of them in a room, even with flex seating, is, it's just not a comfortable option. It's not a great learning environment. And, uh, it's just, I just don't see how that's gonna work. I don't see, I don't see how that's gonna fit even in all these homeschools. I mean, there's a lot of kids, it's just not, it's not a conducive learning environment. I know it's not a fun night for you, thank you for your guys' time.
Alright, thank you. Tracy Leffler.
Everybody has to work their way through the maze.
Hi, I'm Tracy Leffler. Um, I live in Forest Lake. Uh, in all transparency, I am, um, out of district. So, um, I am an introvert, so my daughter is an extrovert and really wants me- So, um, I am an introvert, so my daughter is an extrovert and really wanted me to come. So I'm a little terrified, but our kids push us sometimes, so. Um, I'm here. She said, um, I have to tell you that CME is great and she would like to continue to make it great from here on out. Um, I, like so many other families, we tried, um, our home district primary school. Uh, it was not a good experience. It was a, um, a little bit of a traumatic experience for my daughter. She felt like she'd kinda decided she was just a naughty kid and kinda was starting to give up at, at kindergarten. And it just was terrifying as a parent. Um, we searched and we found the modified Montessori option. And, um, we came to the school because of those blended classrooms and being able to stay with a teacher for more than one year. To not have to restart again every year with a new teacher when you know your child has, um, little special needs every now and then and know that they're twerks and kinda inside out. Um, so I just wanna say, I know there are other great schools that potentially are options. Um, I think before I had kids, I was wowed by the idea behind STEM and Spanish immersion. That sounds amazing, but I think as a parent, I have to do what's right for my daughter and my kids. So, um, there isn't any other option out there with the blended classroom setting. So that makes this decision very difficult. Um, and I also just wanna share, this conversation with my daughter has been, has been difficult. I think that the kids understood that they were moving to a new school. So it's confusing to explain that, um, and my daughter thinks, oh yeah, we're closing, we're just going to a new building. That's what we're doing next year. And it's difficult to explain now that, no, there, there might not be a new building, like we might just be done. So I just kinda wanna put that, um, in your heart as well, so. Thanks for listening, I really appreciate and I understand you're in a very tough position, so, thank you.
Good, thank you. Megan Newcomb?
Um, thank you for listening to me tonight. And I have to apologize, like Tracy, I am very nervous. My audience usually is three, four, and five-year-olds. So, um, I do a lot of song and unfortunately, no, I'm not gonna sing any songs for you. I live in Forest Lake. Um, my husband and I both have the privilege of teaching in the district. Um, he is at the high school and I have the privilege of teaching Steps Ahead and working with the preschoolers at the CLC and working with this great staff. Um, it has been hard. Um, Tim and I have lived in the district eighteen years. He is in his twenty-third year, so we have been through a lot of the levies and take a deep breath every time it comes up because he is involved in theater, speech, teaches English. And both of our daughters are in band. And our daughter Emma, who is at Century, is a ninth grader, is involved in FFA, speech, soccer, which had taken a cut, I think it was a couple of years ago, with the junior high sports. Um, so we've kinda been through it, but I'm here tonight because I teach at the CLC where the staff is and where, um, I have Charlie, who is Tracy's youngest, well, middle, no, because they have Jack, um, in my class. And I just really enjoy that partnership, especially with Tina's Barbie, who's a kindergarten teacher. As a preschool teacher, we really have to keep up to date on all the changes in the kindergarten system so that we're doing our job to get these preschoolers ready for kindergarten. So it's just really nice to have that partnership with her and just say, hey Tina, are there any, you know, things we should be changing our curriculum, working with? And it's nice to have that with her. Um, I just wanted to also talk about our program at Steps Ahead. Some of the students have siblings at the Montessori and would we have those kids if their big sister or brother didn't go to CME? And that really hurts me because I have enjoyed every child that I have and when parents, the biggest question for preschool parents is, oh, kindergarten's coming up. Are they ready? Where should they go to kindergarten? And it's, I, you know, I have, like, both of my girls went to Scandia and I love pushing Scandia, but it's so nice when I can say, hey, let's just walk next door and see what we have here. And for a preschooler, as, as you can see me, it's nervous being up here, but if a preschooler going to kindergarten, wouldn't it be awesome if they can just be in the building that they've already been in for two years? Know some of the faces and then it's just an easy transition for them. And also, I get to keep seeing them and see how they grow. So I think really, really, it's really just concerning if CME closes. I think for the future programs in preschool, you know, we might lose some of those kids that we would have if they, CME wasn't open. So, um, I've worked on the levy. Tim and I both have been on the levy and done a lot that we can for it and we will be there again for you for this coming levy and whatever we can do as teachers and parents, try to help get the word out. So, I really hope it passes. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. And we've got two other speakers. If anybody would like to speak, just get me a green card. At your leisure.
Thank you.
Uh, Patricia Jelnik?
Hi, I'm Patricia Jelnik. I have been in Minnesota for ten years, live right next to the Montessori. My daughters just left. They love Montessori, one is in Steps Ahead. They both, uh, Jamie is so excited to start kindergarten with Miss Barbie if it can still happen. Um, Jessie, you know, she just loves Montessori. The smaller classroom sizes, it works for our kids, we've heard it, you know, it's great. Um, I just feel like, I have worked for the district for nine years and I've, I know about the budget cuts, it's hard. But I just wanted to say, I feel like if Montessori does close, then as a district, we have failed every single one of these students for closing it. Um, we won't, we will go to Forest View for one year and then we will choose to go to North Lakes. We've checked out their programs, we like it, but we just don't feel like the other, the other elementary schools will do my kids justice. So, thank you guys for hearing.
Sue Wagner?
Good evening, I'm Sue Wagner, I live in Forest Lake. Um, I made a decision to return to Minnesota two years ago and chose, and I promised my then-second grader that I would find a Montessori school for her because her big brother and sister went to a certified accredited Montessori in Ohio through, from preschool to eighth grade. And she wanted the same opportunities because as a second grader, she wanted to be the big kid on campus and be the third grader in her classroom because there's nothing better than being the big kid on campus. So, um, I tried to keep that promise and as a side note, the education that I had to, that I invested in, that I chose to invest in was upwards of ten thousand dollars per year in, in Ohio. And so, um, it was important to me when I saw that there was a public Montessori option. That was an amazing opportunity for me because those are not opportunities that happened anywhere in Ohio and very few other places across the country. Yes, Central Montessori is not a true accredited Montessori. But as a trained paraprofessional in Montessori, a teacher and employee at a, at the Montessori school where my kids graduated from eighth grade, a fifteen-year parent of an accredited Montessori, I will tell you that CME has the core tenants that Dr. Montessori wanted for the kids. And that was the multi-age classrooms to be able to foster leadership, to be able to learn from each other because that's where our kids in, you know, formerly in the one, one school, one class, um, schoolhouses, that's how they learn, is not just from the adults, but from each other, to be role models. The differentiated class sizes for the observation of the teachers to be able to observe what that child needs. But also the ideas of respect for all kinds of people for, and for the peace curriculum. Maria Montessori, though she was Catholic, was into, was very focused on peace and the peace that, that, that we all need to cultivate from one another. So, and I also wanted to agree that the transitions to which my daughter struggles with, being able to have the same teacher and having, being able to know her quirkiness, because she's quirky, uh, is important that they can foster that quirkiness, so. I agree with the presentation made at the beginning that public Montessori can be an incredible marketing opportunity. This is a unique situation for the district. I came to Forest Lake, I made a choice to come to Forest Lake because of the public Montessori option. I feel that if you do it right, you can market that to other districts because the profile of a student in elementary age is changing. There, there need different ways to learn and, and we need to follow the child and offer those opportunities. I too, uh, understand that being charged as stewards of the district, you have a very difficult decision. But closure of a school is permanent. No one wants to pay more fees. Trust me, having paid, uh, private tuition for fourteen years, I don't wanna pay more fees. But fees can be revoked. A school, a community cannot be reopened. Thank you.
Uh, Angie Dregler? How do, how off was I on that?
You're close enough.
Alright.
Um, okay, um.
Hi, um, I, we moved here, uh, I, I graduated from Forest Lake a long, long, very long time ago. Um, it seems that way at least. Dr. Massey followed my brother from Centennial when we moved from Centennial to Forest Lake. You knew my brother quite well, he was always in trouble. I was the complete opposite, but, so it's a long time ago. Um, but I moved away, I moved, we lived in Texas for a while. We moved back up here two years ago, um, because my husband was an old industry job in Texas and it was crashing, so we moved back in with my parents. At the time, I was homeschooling Jonathan because I didn't trust the schools in Texas and he is incredibly quirky. A lot happened between us moving up here. Um, my mother-in-law passed away, my husband was in a really bad car wreck. And I was getting overwhelmed with homeschooling just with everything and I've got three kids, he's my oldest. And we found out about the Montessori and we enrolled him and I honestly don't think he would do so well at any other school as he does here. At the moment, we, since it came up that it may close, we're looking back into homeschooling again or we're, there's a huge possibility we may be moving back to Texas this last summer. My husband and I were discussing if we were gonna go buy a house now in Texas or wait another year and be able to buy a house in Minnesota because houses up here are so much more expensive. And we decided to wait a year and stay in Minnesota because we did not wanna move him away from this awesome team he has here. They have done so much for him in so many ways and I don't think he would get that at any other school. I don't think he would be able to sit still or handle any other type of classroom. And this school has been so awesome, he's made friends here that their parents have said the same thing about their children, that they don't feel that they would get this type of education anywhere else. I, I don't know what we'll do, but he won't, I don't think we'll have any kids in the Forest Lakes district. Right now, we're looking hard for a place to move, to buy a house here in the Forest Lake district, but now we're kind of on hold till we see what happens with this school. Um, we, I'm afraid for my kids. Um, I saw Forest Lake School fail with budgets and I saw some of my favorite teachers get let go when I was in high school here and I kinda was nervous about sending my kids to Forest Lake School for that same reason. I'm like, the budget, the levy's never passed there, why would it be any different now? And here, it's proven the same thing since we've moved back. So, um, my goodness, okay. Um, it, it's been a wonderful opportunity at this school.
Alright, thank you. Do we have any other speakers?
Quick question, when is the, you know?
Uh, we're looking at May seventeenth.
Okay.
Alright, uh, the recording of the day's hearing as well as all of the exhibits.
Pushing away from the back.
Yeah.
Alright.
So.
Kim Brod.
Sorry. Thank you, Kim Rowan, and, um, this kind of emotional for me because my son's only in fourth. We moved here a year ago because there was a Montessori option. That was why we moved here. And we're not the only family to move here because of a Montessori option. It's a great option for students to learn and it's frankly, you guys talk about decreasing Montessori numbers. All over the country, Montessori schools have a waiting list to get in. All you have to do is say, hey, Forest Lake has Montessori School of here, come here, come enroll your kids and they'll be here in no time. All the kids on all the waiting lists of all the other surrounding Montessori schools would be here in a heartbeat if they knew that the school was here. And it's a public school. It's great. And, I don't know. I heard the number about forty-seven students leaving the school district and yet sixty-five hundred per student for, from the state. There's your two-hundred-and-ninety-one-thousand. And you know what? That's your three-hundred-thousand you're gonna save this year. How does this make any sense? How can you justify closing the school and save nothing? You still have a three-hundred-thousand gap. It doesn't work, the math doesn't add up. So I ask you, how are you letting this happen? Find a cut somewhere else. The school needs to stay open for my son to go here, for his best friend Luke to come here. And he's gonna start kindergarten next year, he's enrolled. And now they're like, where do we send him? Where are we gonna go? So now they have to tour all the other kindergartens to find out where they were, he's gonna go. Same with me. Where are we now gonna send our kid? We moved here for the Montessori option. Do we move? Do we send him to Shoreview or Moundsview or somewhere else? Because those school districts have money, their towns support the schools. We moved here because we thought Forest Lake did. And it sends me that we can't get a levy passed. And I ask you, what are you gonna do to make it pass? What are you gonna do to make this pass? What are you gonna do to make it happen? Because the town needs it, the schools need it. I mean, the high schoolers can stand up for a police department, but we can't stand up to keep the Montessori school open? I mean, if the elementary kids could actually protest the streets with signs and keep their school open, I'm sure they would do it. So you know what? And we're here. You're holding them back because of budget cuts, because you can't find the money somewhere else in the budget. And they talk about it being a permanent thing. It is a permanent thing. You're not gonna, say they pass the levy, are you gonna reopen the Montessori School next year? If we pass the levy in November? Is that gonna happen? Is that on your slate of things to do? Is, are the first thing you're gonna do is reopen the Montessori School? No. It's closed, it's done. It's off your minds, it's back in the budget from last year. Well, these kids, it's still gonna matter. It's still gonna matter to them. Every day, they go to school, like, every day we go to work, they go to school. They're with their friends, they're with their peers. And they're growing, they're learning. And you know what? It means something to them. It's their whole life, it's school and friends. Yeah, they see their parents and stuff, but so what? I mean, what do you remember of childhood? Do you remember your friends at school and do you remember your third-grade teacher? Well, you know what? You do. You do, like, look at these kids, like, they're like, yeah. So, you know what? It's up to you guys, find somewhere else in the budget to make the cuts that you need to make for this year. But you know what? There's so many more years ahead of them than just one-year budget cuts. And it's up to you to do it. So, on behalf of everyone here, keep the school open. It's worth it. It's worth it for the kids, it's worth it for the community. And it's not that much money and the net is zero anyway when you break down the numbers, so. So, thanks.
All right. The recording of today's hearing as well as all of the exhibits received during the hearing will be considered by the school board. In addition, the school board invites the administration and members of the public to submit proposed findings and conclusions for the board to consider. The proposed findings and conclusions must be provided to Ms. Ramberg at the district office no later than May third, 2018. Copies of the administration's proposed findings, once they are submitted, as well as copies of the exhibits submitted during today's hearing, will be available upon request in the district's main offices located at sixty-one hundred North, Two Hundred Tenth Street, Forest Lake, Minnesota. You may submit a letter containing your testimony to the school board anytime before its May seventeenth meeting, and you may also speak at that meeting if there's anything else you would like to add. So I wanna thank everybody for coming out tonight. And with that, do we have a motion to adjourn? Any discussion? If there's no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? All right, thank you, everyone.
Sir, why didn't you move the meeting? I guess there are four days. Why hasn't it moved back to the seventeenth? Can you explain that? Paying in our kids' four days.
It's not our fault.
What I can tell you is that if, it, it's not completely clear that we needed to have a public hearing, but we thought it was appropriate to do so, to have this kind of public input and to have this dialogue. With the decision to have a public hearing, there are requirements for two official notices in the paper. There was a glitch with the public notice a week, two weeks ago, so it got in this week. We still need two official notices in the paper before, and public, an additional round of public comment before the school board can make a decision. So the good news is it provides more time for the board to deliberate, consider, receive input, and allows additional time for more input as well. I understand the concern about May seventeenth and the end of the year shortly thereafter.
All right, thank you.